Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711 and 2 dot 2 dash 3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1. Two, to discuss with division council and staff actual or probable litigation and specifically legal matters involving specific staff and students under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A7 and 8. Three, to consult with legal counsel and receive legal advice regarding Prince William County Schools' policies pertaining to sexually explicit materials under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A8. Four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees, which requires legal advice and guidance as provided by VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A8. Five, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the acquisition of real property for the construction of a school where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 37113. And six, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and actions taken in response to such matters where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A and 19.
So a second?
Ms. Jackson, a second, thank you.
Ms. Ralston? Ms. Ralston?
So the vote is six yes, one not present vote, Ms. Ralston, one absent, Dr. Latif, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to share that unfortunately Chairman Latif is unable to be here this evening. You may recall that last year at this time, he was recognized as Regional Elected Leader of the Year by George Mason University. Tonight, he is expected to present this year's award and will be presenting to his dear friend and colleague Fairfax County School Board Member, former Chair Karen Corbett Sanders. They've worked closely over the years on regional issues benefiting both school divisions. Okay, moving on to section seven, a motion is in order. Ms. Williams?
7.01. Accidentally logged out. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of December 7th, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters, as lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Ms. Jackson, a second.
Thank you. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes, I see her.
So that was a yes from Ms. Ralston?
Uh huh. The vote is seven yes, one absent, Chairman Latif, motion passed.
All right, thank you. Moving on to closed session, action items, a motion is in order for 9.01.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Akapor?
A second.
Thank you. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's a yes from Ms. Ralston.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Chairman Latif, motion passed.
All right, next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Danielle Sharifi, the student representative, would you mind leading us today? All right, moving on to the Thriving Futures section of the evening. Good evening. During tonight's launching Thriving Futures, we will be recognizing the accomplishments of our students from three schools. We will begin with the Okaquan District. Mrs. Lilly Jesse, please share the great news about Carydale Elementary School.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Carydale, but before I recognize Carydale, I inherited this school this year because of district changes. So, Mrs. Ralston, this was your school last year? So I would like to say on behalf of Mrs. Ralston, I would like to recognize Carydale Elementary School as a National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators of the, of national, I'm sorry, 2022 National Distinguished School. Carydale is one of up to 100 schools throughout the country and one of only two schools in Virginia being recognized nationally for exceptional achievement in 2022. The school was chosen for their success in closing the achievement gap between groups. I know that part of Carydale's success has been attributed to the work of visible learning. One of the main aspects of visible learning is a new understanding of the enhanced roles of teachers. And I'm going to stop here because I went to Carydale for your back-to-school night, and I visited several classrooms, and I could not believe the consistency. And I also want to say a little bit about visible learning, and John Hatt is research. This is not a new finding because he has been doing this research for 15 years, and it is a meta-analysis of 1,200 meta-analyses of the influence on achievement of school-aged students. The research involves many millions of students and represents the largest ever evidence-based research. And when I talked to your principal, she said that you guys took that part of his research that dealt with teacher clarity. So I would like to introduce, have you introduce yourselves and your principal. And tonight, I would like for your principal, hold on, because I wanted to make sure I don't mispronounce her name. I think I've got it. Elise Jafaro is here to introduce her colleagues and students, and welcome and congratulations. I'm very, very proud to inherit this school, and I know Mrs. Ralston shares that same pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse, School Board Chairman Dr. Latif, Vice Chairmanwoman Ms. Jackson, the School Board Members, and Dr. McDade. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening on behalf of Carydale Elementary School. First, I'd like to introduce members of our outstanding team. Shara Thomas, Assistant Principal. Kiara Jenkins, first grade teacher. Taylor Riley, second grade. Nicole Moran, third grade. Jenna Wilson, fourth grade. Eileen Traxel and Wendy McGrail, Title I. Michelle Nicolai, English Learners Teacher. And Tasha Johnson, Reading Specialist. I am honored to stand before you as the Principal of Carydale Elementary School, a National Distinguished School. I am beyond proud for our students and their families, teachers, and other supporting staff members who have worked very hard to earn this recognition. As Ms. Jesse mentioned, our work with visible learning and teacher clarity has been critical to our success. Visible learning means an enhanced role for teachers as they become evaluators of their own teaching. According to John Hattie, visible learning and teaching occurs when teachers see learning through the eyes of students and help them to become their own teachers. At Carydale, we shifted our focus from teaching to learning. We used evidence-based practices to support every student's learning more effectively. Teacher clarity is both a method and a mindset. It's teaching that is intentional and organized through clear learning intentions and success criteria. In our classrooms, all staff are using the learning intentions and success criteria to effectively teach our Virginia standards of learning. The success criteria ultimately becomes a guide or a pathway for students to learn. We also have a highly effective culture of collaboration to meet the needs of our unique student population, and teacher clarity is truly the key factor in the collaborative learning team process. We appreciate the support of the Division in our efforts, and again, thank you so much for this recognition. We are very honored to be here tonight, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Before Mrs. Jackson speaks, I looked at your data. And ELL kids, you were like 20 points above the county, and I think 40 points above the state, I'm not sure. And your success rate has, when I look, I look at various, various national rankings, and your school was a one-star school for three or four or five years. You're now, you moved from last year to this year to a three-star school. And I just want people to know that students in all backgrounds and all levels of, all backgrounds and all, all levels of learning can learn at high levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jesse. Wonderful. And congratulations, Carydale. Before I go on to Brentsville District High School, would you like to take the picture now? Could you guys come forward and we'll take your picture? Thank you. Congratulations again. I am pleased to share the great news next about Brentsville District High School. The Brentsville District High School Cheer Team recently earned the VHSL 2022 Class III State Championship Title. This program, yeah. This program's won a lot of awards. This program has owned state titles in 2007, 2013, 2019, and 2022. In addition, the cheerleading program at Brentsville District High School has owned 10 regional titles and 21 district titles. Their coach, Taryn Witt, is a Brentsville graduate and a former cheer team member. Principal Dr. Kat Meitz is here along with Ms. Witt to introduce the team and coaches. So if you guys...
Good evening, and thank you for acknowledging the work that these athletes and coaches have put in. I'm proud to introduce to you the 2022 Varsity Tiger Competition Cheer Team. Delaney Caruso, Emma Champion, Katie Cook, Charlie Edgar, Ellie Thunderberg, Maddie Harold, Sammy Harold, Bryn Hurt, Trinity Hess, Kayla Huntington, Kaitlin Kenworthy, Abby King, Kylie Addison, Annabelle Perry, Kayla Randall, Kira Rodenheiser, Grayson Sheeran, Manager Anaya Barner, Assistant Coaches Emma Holland and Ashton Stein, and Head Coach and Class III State Coach of the Year, Taryn Witt. Before I introduce the young woman behind me, I want to take just a couple minutes to acknowledge the fact that obviously they're talented and they work hard. I think any team that goes to states would say that. What some of you may not understand about cheer, and I'm going to take this opportunity to make sure you do, is that when you have a player injured or someone ill, you don't get to swap out a receiver. It's not how it works. You get to change your stunt, you get to redo your formation to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing. You get to decide that someone else now has to grab the megaphone and now start their tumbling pass at the opposite corner. And that can all happen within two to three days of a competition, and you're adjusting everything. On top of which, of course, you're also cheering on every team, including our Unified Sports Teams. And if that weren't enough, their mantra for the year were "family and all in." So let me explain to you what I think that means to them. They're the first ones in the school in the year with the teachers, helping them set up classrooms and talking to the teachers about how excited they are during the year. They help it back to school night. They cheer on the academic team. And to be honest, they give me Tigers. They're so much fun to watch and enjoy every time they stunt, not that we all don't hold our breath, right? We all know. And she's not here tonight, but I want to acknowledge Anaya Barner because anyone who's run the music at a cheer competition knows that's one of the most stressful jobs on the planet because when the music is off, it goes awry pretty quickly. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you a senior and the Class III Cheerleader of the Year for the State, Emma Champion.
All right. Hello, everyone. I would first like to start off by thanking all of our teammates' parents for always supporting us and being so quick to volunteer to help us out whenever we need. And I would also like to thank our coaches, Coach Witt, Coach Stein, and Coach Holland, for recognizing our potential and seeing our goal of winning states and helping us reach that goal and doing everything in their power that they could do to help us out. Now, this team has worked hard all season, inside and outside of practice. From day one, we set the goal of winning states, and each and every single member was committed to that goal. Our hard work all paid off when we got to the state competition and hit our best two routines of the season, all thanks to our parents, coaches, and every single teammate. Another thank you goes out to our Athletic Director, Mr. Cameron, and our Principal, Dr. Meitz, for always supporting us and showing up to our state competitions. And my last thank you goes out to the School Board for inviting us here tonight to honor our achievements. Thank you.
I'm so proud to represent your school. Congratulations again to Brentsville District High School Tigers. Before we go on and celebrate one more, would you like to do the picture now? Okay, so congratulations again, and please step forward.
Girls, angle yourselves and slide in a little, get it tight.
Congratulations again. I am excited to share that the Prince William County School System has one more championship cheer team this year. Ms. Lisa Zakapor from Coles Magisteria District will tell us some more.
Let's make sure they're all in here. All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. The Colgan High School Cheer Team made history this year. 2022 is the first time the Colgan Cheer Team has advanced to the state competition, earning the first state competition championship in cheer. The Sharks are the VHSL 2022 Class VI State Champions. Michelle Bordelon, referred to as Coach B, expects success through individual goal-setting and encouraging each competitor to leave everything on the mat. Principal Dr. Tim Healy and Coach B are here tonight to introduce their award-winning team.
Thank you, Ms. Zakapor, and thank you, members of the School Board and Dr. McDade, for having us tonight. I am Michelle Bordelon, the head cheer coach at Colgan. And with me tonight is my assistant coach, Ms. Ronnie Owen. We are honored to introduce to you the Class VI Cheerleading State Champions. Leila Abibi, Matthew Allen, Bree Chandler, Kylie Craig, Zoe Krim, Christian Diaz, Casey Greit, Hayden Harvey, Maddie Haslam, Lily Hinshaw, Nancy James, Logan Johnson, Julia Kenny, Presley Kaiser, Charlotte Koch, Jatara Maynor, Tabitha Misner, Emily Moss, Morgan Mulally, Riley Owen, Riley Posty, Carly Stade, Ava Wilson, and Maisy Zajak. When I interviewed with Dr. Healy seven years ago, I made it very clear that I was not interested in coaching cheerleading anymore. Within one year of saying those words, the head coach had left, and I found myself sitting in his office discussing my vision for Colgan Cheer. For the past six years, I've had the opportunity to watch this program grow by leaps and bounds. This year was the year all the hard work paid off. We started this season with a saying of "one thing at a time." This applied to every practice, every invitational, and every goal we set as a team. Our first two goals as a team were to place first in the Cardinal District Cheer Championship and place in the top two of the Region 6B Cheer Championship. I am proud to say we accomplished these goals and headed to states. As we prepared for Colgan's very first-ever trip to the state championship, these athletes worked harder than I had ever seen them work before. They pushed through illness and injury, visiting our athletic trainer many times. They would not give up on themselves or their team. Our team peaked at the right time and executed two flawless rounds. However, if I'm being honest, I didn't see the very end as clearly as I had tears in my eyes. I was so proud when our name was announced as the 2022 State Champs. While this accomplishment shows the talent, skill, and hard work of a team, one athlete, sophomore Riley Owen, was recognized as the VHSL Class VI Cheerleader of the Year. This journey could not have been possible without essential people. Thank you to the parents of our athletes. Thank you, Ms. Ashley Osborne, our athletic trainer, and Mr. Nathan Staples, our Director of Student Activities. I would especially like to thank Dr. Tim Healy, our principal, for trusting my vision with Colgan Cheer and having confidence in me even when I wasn't sure I had it in myself. I would like to personally thank Coach Owen for being there every step of the way. We would not be here without you. Thank you to my family for being so supportive all season long, for helping with my own children when I needed to be at practice, for coming to each and every competition and listening to vent sessions when those had to be had. And lastly, thank you to Dr. McDade and the School Board for your continued support and for honoring us tonight.
Congratulations Sharks again for making history. Great job. And we are so proud of you guys. And before we move on, we can bring forward, and we'll take some pictures.
Bree.
Got to get it a little tighter. All right. I'm going to take several shots on three. Take the picture, ready? One, two, three. We'll do another. One, two, three. Let's do one more. There's always a blinker out there, so. Ready? One, two, three. Great. Congratulations.
Great, thank you, Dr. McDade. Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Is there a second?
Ms. Jackson, a second.
Thank you. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's right, we do need to have discussion. Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, I just would like to take the opportunity, before we vote on the consent agenda, to congratulate Ms. Banya and thank her. I'm not sure if she's in the audience tonight. If you are, don't mind standing, but I appreciate her willingness to serve Ms. Banya on the CAC Committee and represent the Woodbridge District. Thank you so much, and I'm sure that your perspective will be a fantastic addition to the CAC Committee. And thank you also for being an employee of our school division.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. On the consent agenda, there are some collective bargaining changes. One, I'm happy that we are moving forward with electronic voting to make this as seamless as possible to encourage turnout for those elections. I wanted to ask because there's been some back and forth, well, public back and forth, but there's been some discussion about date of hire and how that pertains to the current collection of signatures to reach that 30% threshold for classified and certified employees. I wanted to have it on the record as I asked this, so we have this now finalized from our attorney. Are we requiring a date of hire at the current process?
Mr. Wilk, no, the resolution does not speak to anything having to do with date of hire. It says that signature cards have to be provided to the third-party neutral who will verify the 30% interest threshold has been met, but there's nothing requiring the collection of date of hire in the resolution.
Ms. Wall was next.
I also have a question on that topic, and then I have a comment on another item on the consent agenda. My question is, I would like to request that Division Council also address for the board and public on the topic of security measures that would relate to electronic billing or balloting, and also the issue of cost related to electronic balloting, if you would be so kind as to do that.
Sure, Ms. Wall, thank you. First of all, just so people know, we have, the third-party neutral that has been agreed upon by the parties expressed a preference that we modify the, you'll recall that in the board's adopted resolution, we allowed voting by mail and in person, and he requested because we've done some more exploration and understanding and confidence level in the ability to securely and cost-effectively, frankly, do electronic voting for members. And we've explored that and had many discussions with both the PWA president and myself, talking with the vendors and making sure we get proposals and understand exactly what will occur. We're certainly confident in the security measures in place. It's sort of a closed system because we would be using our own internal email system, and there's a mail component to it as well. And as cost-effective goes, it's about half the cost of a mail ballot election, so it's about probably, if we had an election with all 11,000 and so employees in the both bargaining units, you're talking probably about $50,000 total versus 80 or 90 or more for a full mail election, because obviously the mailing, the postage is the biggest expense in that. You're talking about almost between $7.50 and $8 per piece to do a mail-only election, and it's about half that to do a, to do a electronic election. Does that answer your question, Ms. Wall?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I have also a comment on a consent agenda item, Ms. Chairman. Okay. I wanted to comment on the speed reduction zone, Measure 11.10. I've been concerned about safety on the roads near Battlefield High School for a very long time, and those of you who know or who are familiar with Route 15, it's a major commuting thoroughfare between Virginia and Maryland and even up into Pennsylvania. And the road gets a huge amount of traffic, and traffic moves at highway speeds often with many students crossing Route 15 at the intersection of Graduation Drive. And both sides of the road are relatively hidden as far as the neighborhood is set back, the school is set back, so it's a highway that, an intersection that can catch people unawares. There have been some very serious accidents in recent years, even just as recently as two weeks ago. So I've been working on this issue since joining the board, trying to find solutions to improve safety at this intersection. I'm pleased to see that there was a traffic study completed and that a speed reduction zone is recommended. The current road, speed limit on this road is 55 miles per hour. That's why I said it's highway speeds. Oftentimes, people go even faster than that. It's just too fast for this area. And so I know the community is very strongly in support of any safety measure that we can do to improve the safety of traveling to and from our school here at Battlefield High School. So I just wanted to speak to that. I'm very thankful for this. I look forward to this. I think the community needs it, and the students benefit. We all benefit. Thank you.
Ms. Sargapour, do you still have a question? Okay. Ms. Jesse, did you? No, Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Just want to follow up what my colleague, Ms. Wall, was talking about with cost. Mr. Anderson, will you explain the breakdown of that, that I know you mentioned the cost efficiency and $50,000? How is that broken down proportionally between us and the union?
The resolution dictates that the costs be split evenly between the school board and any employee association.
Thank you. So then really, our cost would be $25,000, right?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Just, Mr. Anderson, if you could just clarify for the public, if they have any further questions, how do they, about this update or any other details regarding collective bargaining, the information can be found, or?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Williams. The, there are frequently asked questions posted on our website and that are available to answer sort of basic questions about the process and what's, where we are in the process, and we try to update those so that the public knows what is currently going on. Probably not as frequently as the board would like, but we try to get them up there when we can. So that's an easy place for them to go and ask, get their questions answered. And of course, they're welcome to email the superintendent's account or whatever account on, through the website, and if they have specific questions.
Ms. Wall?
And one other item on the consent agenda is the internal audit plan. I just want to say, I want to commend the committee for working on this, the auditors for working on this. I think it's a really good plan, and I wanted to mention that it's designed with flexibility in mind, depending on divisional needs and budgetary considerations. Very comprehensive plan, and gives us flexibility to do what we need to do. So I wanted to thank the auditors and the audit committee for their hard work.
Any further discussion? Okay. Please vote, and Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
That would be a yes from Ms. Ralston.
The vote is seven yes, one not present, but, I'm sorry, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Moving on to citizen comments. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with a clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is one hour, and citizens may speak on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations or policies of PWCS. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, cheering, or jeering to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. So I'm going to call the first four, because we have eight speakers today, and then I will say your name when to approach the podium. So the first four, we have Augustus Saipard, Brandy Provenzano, Maggie Hansford, and Heather Oberle. So the first speaker would be Augustus Saipard.
My name is Augustus Saipard. I am a seventh grader at Benton Middle School. My mom and I searched on Google how many deaf and hard-of-hearing students there are in the United States. There are about 300,000 students between ages five to 17. I have learned that each deaf and hard-of-hearing student needs two in-person certificated queue language translators, CLTs, or sign language interpreters per student. So we do not have 600,000 in the U.S. We only have 10,000. I want to change that for the better. I would like others to queue to me and queue with me, so we can have more in our country and in my school, who can queue. And in as many schools as possible. I need to speak up for myself and all the children who are deaf and hard-of-hearing, who need services like CLTs and sign language interpreters. I have my own right. I love speech, helping others beside me and seeing queued speech. I don't like queuing speech to others yet. Please teach me queued American English in school and others who need it too. I need to have two CLTs so they can switch, and the CLT that I was using could have a break. To solve the problem of not having enough CLTs, we can have my speech on TV or YouTube. The people who are watching might want to help and learn to queue, and those who want to learn, great. To help fix those who say, "Oh, no, another thing I have to learn," to queue speech, to turn their thought around, to want to learn how to queue, there could be two methods. One, the good way that we always think of is about God and everything around you and respect, love Him, and love Earth as it is. Two, they could be struggling so hard that they don't want to do any more. But with courage, we help them get through the pain and by thoughtful things and get rid of the matter. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Brandy Provenzano.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. Tonight, I would like to talk about our classified staff. But first, a moment of clarification. The form provided to PWEA from the division required a date of hire, and that document must be printed out and signed, as opposed to the digital card, which was previously allowed and extremely successful. This was a concern from the very beginning, and school board members publicly commented that they would look into it. This has unfairly prevented many of our classified staff from signing, as the process to find their date of hire is cumbersome. Walking around with paperwork before and after contract hours has been difficult, to say the least. From the very first day that we launched our collective bargaining campaign, classified staff were included. Maggie Hansford stood at the bus lot in sub-zero temperatures to collect their signatures. She visited custodial workers and cafeteria workers. They have always been a part of our plan. Sadly, I am not sure they are part of anyone else's plan. It should be easy to collect signatures, right? If they actually wanted collective bargaining rights, of course they would sign. Today, I spoke with a custodian who asked me shyly if I would be willing to write her name on the form for her. I told her that I could not. Tears of shame welled up in her eyes, and she told me she could not read or write. She has been working for Prince William County Schools for 15 years. Fifteen years, and she has never missed a day, she said proudly, straightening her posture and pushing her shoulders back. I watched her grow inches before my eyes. Never missed a day. They gave me an award for that, she told me proudly. It's easy to sit from our point of privilege and say that anyone could sign. It's almost like saying anyone who wants to vote should just be able to go vote. There couldn't possibly be barriers, systemic barriers, preventing them from doing so. It's much harder to take a good, critical look at ourselves and the systems that we participate in and ask, why would we deprive these rights of any employee? I asked the custodian if she would watch the meeting tonight, and she laughed. She works a second job cleaning office buildings in Herndon, but she did sign, very self-consciously, with only her initials. She hugged me tighter than strangers do and thanked me, but sadly, she walked away believing that it would not change a thing. I hope that it does. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Maggie Hansford.
Hi, my name's Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk, thanks be. I would like to start by saying I have three amazing boys in our school. My oldest is Brentsville Tiger, who went all the way to Phoebus last week, played against Phoebus. My middle one is a proud Marsteller basketball player, and my youngest is a member of the stage crew with the drama team that performed last night at T. Claywood. That's personal. My friendships are personal. Collective bargaining, talking to you all, not personal, and I'm asking you all to do the same. Collective bargaining is about following rules. We want consistent rules, and we want communication. That's all we've asked for. And I want to talk about, a little bit, about what it looks like when you all are not speaking with us. It's miscommunication. It's not being able to understand the infrastructure that's laid out, because there is no lack of, there is lack of communication. When I meet with Division Council, it's two attorneys representing you all that can't make a decision without consulting with you all, with me and our attorney. Why do you all need two attorneys to do, to meet with me? We're having a meeting right now, there's one attorney handling all of this. It seems like over and over again, there just needs to be more and more and more that other county employees aren't having to face. And I ask you all, if you really do want to think about tax dollars in this, think about that. It isn't just $50,000. We're paying for a neutral. That costs every day. So that's on top of the $25,000 that you all will be responsible for, and that's on top of the $25,000 that these, our educators are responsible for.
And my youngest is a member of the stage crew with the drama team that performed last night at T Claywood. That's personal. My friendships are personal. Collective bargaining, talking to you all, not personal. And I'm asking you all to do the same. Collective bargaining is about following rules. We want consistent rules and we want communication. That's all we've asked for. And I want to talk about, a little bit, about what it looks like when you all are not speaking with us. It's miscommunication. It's not being able to understand the infrastructure that's laid out because there is no lack of, there is lack of communication. When I meet with Division Council, it's two attorneys representing you all that can't make a decision without consulting with you all, with me and our attorney. Why do you all need two attorneys to do, to meet with me? We're having a meeting right now, there's one attorney handling all of this. It seems like over and over again, there just needs to be more and more and more that other county employees aren't having to face. And I ask you all, if you really do want to think about tax dollars in this, think about that. It isn't just $50,000. We're paying for a neutral. That costs every day. So that's on top of the $25,000 that you all will be responsible for, and that's on top of the $25,000 that these, our educators are responsible for. When you collectively wrote the resolution and you all agreed to it, you basically said, teachers can do this if they can afford it. I'm lucky enough to be able to live here because I'm married and we have a, we have two careers coming together. Not everybody can do that. Not everyone can live and work here. And you all are saying, not $25,000 for teachers to do this, you're saying close to $50,000 for teachers to do this. That's what you're saying. So I want you all to take a good, take a deep breath and realize you're asking educators to spend nearly $50,000 for collective bargaining.
Next, we have Heather Oberly.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and school board. My name is Heather Oberly and my address is on file. Prince William County Schools' vision, 2025 core values, indicates integrity as one of the, I believe it's number three. They claim they will do what is best for students through effective interpersonal relationships, dependability, and doing the right thing in all circumstances, even when no one is watching. Prince Williams County Schools has a long way to go in achieving this, that core value. At the end of the year 2022, 2021, 22 school year, there were over 1,000 positions posted as needing to be filled because people were leaving, not because we were getting new positions created in the county. We are currently short bus drivers, custodial staff, food service workers, secretaries, and licensed teachers. For those who have remained, that means there is more expected of them to cover the open positions. Having so many new personnel needed to fill such positions in a school district, even one as large as Prince William County Schools, does not allow for the effective interpersonal relationships, dependability, and does not show that Prince William County Schools are doing the right thing in all circumstances. For this core value to come to fruition, Prince William County School needs their employees to stay working for the county, to be able to live in the county, and to use the same public spaces as the county residents. Unfortunately, this isn't happening. Bus drivers are being rerouted, which is lowering their hours, which is cutting their pay since they aren't full-time. This has led to at least one bus driver to face evictions this month, another possibly next month. We are short bus drivers, but we don't have enough routes for every driver we have to be able to afford to stay in their home. Teachers who work for Prince William County cannot afford to live in Prince William County. This means we cannot organically create relationships with our neighbors who would then become part of our school community. I live in Stafford. My son attended Stafford Schools. My students ask me all the time to attend various events, but with my commute and family priorities, I am not able to return to school for a late night game or production. And my family does not know anyone at the school where we might be able to make it a family event. This core value is in alignment with what PWEA believes. We want stronger relationships with our students and school families. We are dependable. We are the ones who stayed during the worst of the pandemic. We are also doing the right thing by fighting for collective bargaining for all Prince William County employees. We know what we need to make Prince William County Schools the best in the world. Why don't you want to work with us? And this board sat here last year and said, you would forgive the date of hire on the cards that we had already collected, but said anything in the future had to have date of hire. Thank you.
The remainder are Julie Kanter, Shantel Rock, Kate Olson Flynn, and William Deutsch. So the first speaker we have is Julie Kanter.
Good evening, board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Julie Kanter and my address is on file. I will be reading part of the response to your letter to educators written by the PWEA attorney on our behalf. Dear Wade, I am in receipt of your December 2022 letter. The fact that your correspondence was disseminated, and there's a footnote, I take you at your word, you did not give a copy to any journalist and do not, at this point, know who did. PWEA does not wish to waste time and resources investigating who on the school board is trying to sabotage the collective bargaining process. To media outlets hours after you raised your voice at Maggie during a December 5th phone call with an election vendor is chilling. It would be a wasted time and resource to address every point raised in your correspondence. PWEA strongly disputes your accusation that any delay in getting an election scheduled has been caused solely by PWEA. I am a product of Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary, Beville Middle, and Dale City. My mother spent most of her teaching career working for PWCS at Woodbridge Middle, Ripon Middle, and Woodbridge High School. I do not collect checks from suburban Richmond. Like PWEA's members, the collective bargaining process in Prince William County is personal to me. You and the school board have caused delays. When representatives of PWEA met with you, sorry, met with the school board's outside counsel, PWEA pushed for the resolution to allow for secure, safe electronic elections. PWEA recognized the cost of in-person voting could be prohibitively expensive. After speaking to election vendors, you and the school board conceded that in 2022, it is possible to conduct, conduct an election with an electronic component. Per your December 4th email, I understand that is your anticipation that an item will be added to the school board's December agenda to address electronic voting. It would have been easier to address this issue the first time around. Your attempts to police PWEA's press release and limit their voice with press leaks and veiled threats regarding defamation defamation is even more concerning considering your behavior during the verification process. In April and May of 2022, you sent PWEA and VEA letters asking that they stay out of the press so that the parties could amicably, amicably work together. You further cited PWEA's social media posts in context with, with board members. Now you and the board are engaged in the very behavior for which you chastise PWEA. PWEA disagreed, agreed to the dispute resolution neutral that the school board proposed and agreed to the third-party election vendor that you introduced. PWEA stands willing, ready, and able to move forward with the certification of election process. Instead of raising your voices and taking cheap shots at the media at PWS, let's try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shantel Rock.
Shantel Rock? Yes. Good afternoon, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Shantel Rock and I reside in the Woodbridge District. This is my first opportunity to speak directly to the board and I'm thrilled to use this opportunity to talk about Freedom High School. I am confident that you have read in the newspapers, seen on the locally nightly news, or heard through rumors only negativity surrounding Freedom, the students, the football players, the football program, and its coach. But on this day, I spotlight Freedom, its football program, its players, and its head coach, Darryl Overton. Let me tell you a little bit about these young men, better known as young kings, to their mental strength coach, Pastor Karen. They are tremendously supported by their parents, some who are here with me tonight, their family, their head and assistant coaches, their student body, and those in the community who believe in them. They faithfully attend study hall, a requirement instituted by their coach. As a result, every player has at least a 3.0 GPA. They perform community services, recently handing out 250 turkeys and bags of food to families within the community for Thanksgiving. This is done annually. I am very grateful that my family, including my adopted and foster boys, three who attend Freedom, were able to participate. Over the last two years, every senior member of the football team received a college scholarship to continue to play football at the college level, offering them the opportunity to achieve a college degree, all made possible by their head coach, Darryl Overton, who exposes them to colleges by taking them to college tours across the United States. Currently, 12 members have scholarship offers. Of these 12, the majority are sophomores and juniors. The great Nick Saban, football coach for the University of Alabama, personally spoke with Cam Courtney and EJ Reid. This is remarkable. We salute the football team for their undefeated season and for becoming regional champs. I know this was not an easy achievement because as the wife of a former Freedom football coach, we have seen the time over the last few years that this team worked to get to this point. Waking up at the crack of dawn to participate in weightlifting training and workouts, early Saturday morning football practice, putting in the necessary work done off-season, and studying. Congratulations, but we are not finished yet. This Saturday, the team will participate in the state championship against Madison High School at Old Dominion University at 4:30. Please come out to support this awesome group of young men. To the boys, bring home the state championship. Fly Eagles, fly.
Thank you. Next, we, next we have Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jackson, school board, and Dr. McDade. My name is Dr. Kate Olson Flynn and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Equity and excellence in school is contingent upon the welfare of our students and teachers. And I say this because after listening to our, to our community, I hear things about how our kids are struggling and our teachers are struggling. And to solve this problem, I see that the solution school systems are choosing is to do more. Require more curriculum, more online training, more tests, more mental health surveys, more data, more, more, more. I understand the impetus of doing more to make up for time lost and to meet the expectations in our strategic plan. However, implementing more all at once doesn't mean providing the help that struggling students and teachers need. It just means more. For example, in elementary school, we have kinder classes in Title I schools that have teachers assessing so much that they have no time to teach. We have required science tests, science tests that close online before units have been taught, and ESAL teachers that have been pulled from instructional time with English learners to score another language test. And for what reason? Do more required curriculum and more tests do anything to help these kids learn their ABCs, science, or the English language? Believe me, as a professor of education, I understand this feeling of urgency to assess, but to what end? There needs to be some cross-communication between curriculum departments in the division about how to strategically implement new assessments so the teachers have time to teach. You can't make up for learning loss by testing your way out of it. And the welfare of our teachers is at risk. For the time, for, for the first time, my first-year education students at George Mason are writing papers on teacher burnout and they aren't even teaching yet. They question the profession, profession because they witness how deflated teachers feel. If this talk of stress and lack of agency is so pervasive, then we have a serious problem that will affect teacher quality for years to come. If equity is contingent upon the welfare of our students, then it is dependent on our teachers' well-being too. Teachers need a voice, they need to feel empowered to make pedagogical decisions, so the more that they are doing is meaningful for our struggling students. And you know that an important way to improve teacher agency is through collective bargaining. This means the process for bargaining and the product for the, for which to bargain is fair and relevant to teachers' working conditions. Election processes need to be like every other election we have in our county and teachers need a voice in their employment. We cannot achieve equity and excellence in schools if our students and teachers do not feel their needs and interests are valued. Please uplift our teachers who are working to alleviate our children's struggle in school right now and achieve excellence. They are the backbone of our schools and equity matters for them too. Thank you.
Next, we have William Deutsch. William Deutsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here to speak to item, policy, proposed policy 796, sexually explicit materials, which is up for board matters discussion. This item is a result of a General Assembly law that was passed to require boards to pass model policies by January 1st. It appears that this school division is dragging their feet as far as possible because this item is now up for first reads on December 7th. There is no scheduled meeting of this board for later in December, so either this board is going to pass it after January 1st, or maybe it'll rush and pass it tonight and minimize the notice to the public. That, that appears to be the path that we're on. I would like to focus, just quick clerical error for y'all. Under your regulations, your sections, you skip a section C, you go section A, B, and then D. You also have that in your second definition as well where you skip a letter, so I would do a little clerical cleanup on this before you pass it as well. But moving on to the heart of the regulations, well, one more point as well. The bulk of this item is all in the regulations. You're not actually passing a policy, you're passing a policy telling the superintendent to implement a regulation. And so you're bypassing actually passing the policy that the state law requires. And the importance in that for the public is that the superintendent can change the regulations with much less notice and with much less board involvement. So the, the meat of this is just being passed off by the board. But under your regulations, where the heart of this is, two huge problems. First, your second definition is called harmful to juveniles. And this board strikes this definition in your regulation and doesn't replace it. So this lays out the bare minimum on what somebody thought would be harmful to juveniles and this board doesn't even believe that that counts. So let's hear it. Harmful to juveniles means that quality of any description or representation in whatever form of nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, or sadomasochistic abuse, when A predominantly appeals to the prurient, shameful, or morbid interest of juveniles, is patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable material for juveniles, and C is when taken as a whole lacking in serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for juveniles. So items of prurient, deviant interests that aren't even meeting an educational value, this board doesn't believe is harmful and so presumably would still be allowed to be passed on to students. Next, you have a whole definition of sexually explicit content. This definition includes terms I had to look up that include people who are interested in fecal material and urine. It's a very graphic definition of sexually explicit content. This board's response though is not to ban it. This board's response is simply to go ahead and let parents know about it. But the interesting thing about this definition is that, this definition, the other place it appears in state code, is under-
Sir, thank you.
Can I finish my sentence?
No, time is up. Thank you, sir. Okay, that wraps up the citizen comment time, moving on to 13.0 run, student representative time. Tonight, we have Student Representative Danielle Sharifi joining us on the dais. Ms. Sharifi?
Good evening, everyone, the community school board superintendent. My name is Dawn Sharifi and as she just said, I'm one of the student representatives this year. I just want to briefly talk about an opportunity that I had to experience yesterday, the student leadership workshop, which was held here at the Kell leadership center. We kind of planned this as a way to really connect with high school students across all the 13 schools. And we had students that were sort of told, nominated by the principals, saying, hey, this is a great opportunity for you to voice your opinion, attend this workshop, and if the students wanted to participate, they were eligible. So we did have a few students, I think it was around 30, 35 students across the high schools. They were typically, a majority of them were juniors and seniors, but we did have a few freshmen and sophomores, so it was really nice to see and set across all grade levels. We started off the night with the explanation of why this workshop would be essential to really connecting to the strategic plan and the thriving futures. It's really important, as Dr. McDade said, she really wants the students to have a voice and not just be, you know, here, up here, me saying, I'm representative, but really connecting to the students and then bringing that to the board, to the student senate, and really discussing, how can we go forward with all these things that we see within our schools, both good or things that can be improved. Then we moved on to the student voice committees, discussion of how that would look like. And for those of you that don't know, the student voice committees aim to be sort of a collective unit of student leaders within the school, both self-nominated and teacher-nominated, so we can get a full spectrum of students, whether they're already in leadership positions as part of the student council, or key club, or any other of this type of student organizations, or even nominated by teachers. Because we want to get students that maybe they're not specifically ones that will go in front of the room and start talking about things, but we want to still hear their voice. So we do want to have them also involved with the student voice committees. And the ways that these will be set up is that they will meet once or twice a quarter, maybe once a month, depends up to the school. But they'll discuss a variety of topics that they see within their school and then report to their student senate. And the student senate will report to the representatives and we will all discuss the things that we see. And we kind of just talk about feedback of what they specifically see within their schools, some stuff that the student voice committees at each high school can talk about and discuss and report back on. And then we also hope to bring this to the middle school level as well. And then we had input from Dr. Neal and Dr. Rojas about eliciting, eliciting and- And then we had input from Dr. Neal and Dr. Rojas about eliciting and synthesizing shareholder input, which is kind of just like surveys and feedbacks, and was really interactive for students to know, you know, poll versus surveys, how effective one can be, how to effectively analyze that data. And that can really be helpful for students who want to see how prevalent certain issues are within their schools. And then we talked about specifically, we broke out into different small groups, and we had Prince William County School Staff Facilitator, and we all spoke for 18 minutes per each topic about what they saw within their schools. And then a big topic was diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is something that we really want to bring back to the schools and the Student Voice Committees because it's very important, and I think that a lot of the schools have really been making lots of movement toward especially diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then we just, it was a really great opportunity to connect with students across the schools. I personally met with, you know, a bunch of amazing students, and it's really cool to see like how they, you know, see things through their own lens, you know, coming from different backgrounds and going to different schools. So we definitely hope to have more of these type of workshops at the Student Voice Committees to connect those students directly to the board, to different policies. And then at the end, we had Dr. McDade wrap up with remarks, and I'm sure the students really did enjoy meeting her and learning about her vision for Prince William County. So thank you all, have a good rest of your night, and make sure if you're a high school student, or in the future, middle school students, we will have the Student Voice Committees set up. So definitely when that opportunity comes along, I definitely encourage that you get involved. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good evening. In addition to the schools we recognized earlier this evening, I wish to extend my congratulations and acknowledgement to the 10 new PWCS schools that have earned the Virginia Department of Education Purple Star. A Purple Star is awarded to a school that understands the unique needs of military families and is equipped to address those needs with empathy, care, and concern. Those schools are Battlefield High School, Bennett Elementary School, Bull Run Middle School, Charles J. Cogan High School, Graham Park Middle School, Marshall Elementary School, Piney Branch Elementary School, Potomac Shores Middle School, T. Clay Wood Elementary School, and West Ridge Elementary School. The addition of these schools brings our total number of Purple Star schools to 28. Establishing more Purple Star schools in PWCS helps us work toward continuity in the way we support positive school transitions for our military-connected students and how we support them throughout their time stationed in our area. Our PWCS Vision 2025 Strategic Plan includes an emphasis on the importance of building a welcoming and supportive environment for our military-connected students and their families. I would also like to congratulate our Freedom High School football team, whose win last Saturday qualified them for the state championship in Class VI. We wish the Eagles the best of luck this weekend versus James Madison High School. The game is scheduled for 4:30 PM this Saturday at ODU. Go Eagles! I know the Princeville District High School football team is disappointed that their trip to the Class III state final ended last weekend in Hampton. However, I want to congratulate the team for advancing to the state semifinals and add that the seniors on this team, in fact, have made history. They earned three district titles, two regional titles, two trips to the Final Four, and an overall record of 36 to 11. Good job Tigers! In keeping with our commitment to continuous improvement and becoming a more unified organization with a consistent, high level of excellence in every school for every child, we are embarking on a review of our current site-based management practices. Site-based management is the idea that individual schools should have independence for decision-making to determine what is best for their local operations. For an effective review of our site-based management practices and to define what is managed centrally and what is managed at the site level, we have established a 25-member Site-Based Management Steering Committee. Additionally, 39 members comprised of students, parents, community stakeholders, teachers, principals, assistant principals, and division leadership were invited to serve on working subcommittees. Our Site-Based Management Task Force is led by our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Carol Flannar. The committee's goal is to define and document site-based standards and requirements for operational excellence to achieve high levels of academic achievement in every school. We look forward to providing you with further updates as the work progresses, and together we will achieve organizational coherence for a stronger school division for everyone. Next, it is my pleasure to welcome Dr. Tim Neal, Director of Research Accountability and Strategic Planning, to present on the 2022-23 Quarter One Grade Overview.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jackson, School Board members, and Dr. McDade. I am pleased to be here tonight to share with you some data regarding our first quarter. We are very familiar with this type of report, we received it last year. So tonight, I'm going to go over a few data points with you, covering enrollment, our attendance. I'm going to briefly cycle back and look at our Virginia Growth Assessment, which is a new test as of last year, and then I'll finalize with our elementary and our secondary So this chart here shows our enrollment for the first quarter. This is our active students, and you can see in the total count column, that is the total number of students we have in Prince William County. Right next to it is the count of students that are currently enrolled in our Virtual Learning Academy, and then the percentage of students that are attending virtual classes. So you can, you might recall, we had high numbers of students in virtual courses when the pandemic hit. That number has steadily decreased, and right now, we have a very small percentage of students in those virtual classes full-time. The two tables on this slide show attendance rates. So the table on the left shows attendance rates for school year 21, 22, school year 22, 23, and our virtual attendance rates for 22, 23. This is broken down by grade level, and is, to clarify, it is the first quarter only. In general, the patterns of attendance looks fairly similar this year to last year. Elementary school, with kindergarten being exception, it hovers around 90 to 95 percent. That pattern persists through middle school. By high school level, the attendance rate has dropped to the low 90s, 92, 93. The table on the right shows the percentage of students by absence totals. So you see 0, 1, 2, 3, or 5 or more absences for the quarter. And again, we have a comparison for school year 21, 22, and school year 22, 23. In general, the attendance absence patterns are fairly similar. We did have a 4% drop in the students who have missed zero days of school, and that percentage is equally distributed amongst the other categories. To clarify, we did have 44 days in the first quarter, so that five or more absence, by technical definition, is the number, percent of students who would be considered chronically absent if it were calculated today with 44 days. Moving on to the Virginia Growth Assessment, just as a reminder, this is a new assessment that was established in 2021. In the fall of 2021, students were administered this test in grades 3 through 8, and the goal was to establish a baseline performance and to uncover any unfinished learning patterns. The students were tested on the prior year's content. So in 3rd grade, you were being tested on 2nd grade content, 4th grade on 3rd grade content, and so forth. They did establish cut scores for this, or, but they didn't have passing or failing designations because the intention was to measure growth. Additionally, these scores are reported on a vertical scale score ranging from 900 to 2,000, so the intention, again, was to be able to look at growth. Now, this year, we have a couple of changes that have been made. The most obvious is that instead of just the fall administration now, we will have both a fall and a winter administration. So students have already taken the fall administration that was conducted earlier this year. The winter administration will occur in January. Unlike last year, this year's test current focuses on the current content material. So a 4th grader will be tested on 4th grade content. What this means for us is that the scores and the benchmarks that were established last year are no longer usable with the current test data. Last week, Thursday or Friday, the state did release some guidance in terms of interpreting these scores. My department is in the process of taking that information and translating that into guidance for our schools to use. So the next two slides are going to show the vertical scale scores for fall of 2021 and fall of 2022. The first table will be for reading, the second will be for math. The big takeaway from these is that performance is fairly consistent from one year to the next in terms of where students are. Again, we don't have benchmarks designated to interpret these scores, but very loosely, what we can conclude from this is that a 3rd grader last year is performing fairly similarly to where a 3rd grader was performing this year in the fall. And so these are the math scores. One thing to note about this is if you are in geometry or algebra II, you are not taking the Virginia Growth Assessment. So we do have some middle school students who are in accelerated math courses who do not participate in this. If we move on to grading, for context, Prince William County does use a standards-based grading philosophy and approach. What this means is that if students do not perform well initially, they have the opportunity to undergo remediation and then take, be reassessed for grade replacement. What this means is that the scores or the grade distributions that we pulled for this report can change in the future if a student does undergo remediation and then demonstrates mastery. It's also important to note that teachers have the professional latitude by regulation to override a mathematical average if they believe that the student has demonstrated improvement in mastery over those content standards during the course of the year. So if we look at our elementary grade distributions, as a reminder, this covers grades 3 through 5, so students in the primary, so kindergarten through 2nd grade, don't receive letter grades. The grade distributions are fairly similar to last year, especially when you keep in mind we're dealing with a different cohort of students. So the current year is shown in bold text with a comparison year directly beneath it, and this is broken out by content area. Additionally, at the elementary level, we looked at patterns regarding where students were reading and what reading level they were on is assessed by their teachers. So this is on the report card. Students receive a designation in 1st through 5th grades of below grade level, on grade level, or above grade level. And so again, you can look at the patterns here of the percentage of students that are below grade level. It tends to hover around 35, 36 percent with some variations across those grade levels. Roughly 44, 45 percent are on grade level with about 20 percent above grade level. And again, there are variations amongst the grades in terms of where they fall. Moving on to our middle school, again, with the understanding that this is a different group of students, different cohort, the table is set up the same way with the content areas down the left side, the grade distributions across the top with the current year in bold. And again, the pattern is very similar to last year in terms of grade distribution at the middle school level. And the same would hold true for high school. So when you look at the grade distributions for high school, again, they are largely mirroring with some variations, again, based on different cohorts to how they'd looked last year. And the last piece of analysis that we did was failing course analysis, and we have this broken down by middle school and high school level. So the middle school level, again, the current year is in bold type. You can see that we have 87 percent of our students are not failing any courses compared to last year where it was about 80, 86 percent. So we do have fewer students this year failing courses at the middle school level, and you can see how there has been a corresponding drop in the percentage of students failing one or failing two or more courses. When we look at the high school level, although there are some fluctuations here, for all intents and purposes, the percentages have remained pretty similar to last year. And that concludes our overview of first quarter performance.
Madam Chair, we will entertain questions if the board has any questions at this time. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Dr. McDade. Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I asked a lot of questions in my board briefing in preparation for this meeting, so I won't ask a ton of questions tonight. I'll just ask some of the big ones to kind of keep this not going really late. But just for the public's benefit, I was wondering, I can see from these numbers that a significant portion of children are still reading below grade level at all grades in the elementary school level, and I assume that's normal. I'm assuming it is, but I am also concerned about it. And so my question, I guess, is can you speak to the division's progress with implementing the Virginia Literacy Act and our efforts to improve reading instruction? Like where are we on that, maybe for the public's benefit? Because I know that was kind of a big deal and may inform where we're going with this to try to get movement in the number of children who are reading at grade level or above grade level, which I think is a really good indicator for how well they're going to do in later years.
We are certainly implementing the Literacy Act. We have been doing the training on phonics and phonemic awareness so that in early literacy, they are receiving direct phonics instruction, and so teachers are being trained on that as well. So we have been implementing, and, you know, it will take some time to start to see some of the progress, but we are seeing some promising practice in the classrooms.
Okay, that's great. That's great to hear. Thank you. Can I ask another question? Okay. I was wondering if, when we get those results from the winter growth assessment that you said will be in January or February?
January.
If we're going to be able to see more accurately the proportion of students in proficient and advanced categories?
So I can't speak to how VDOE is, what guidance they're going to offer for that. What I can say is that those scores will allow us to look to see what kind of trajectory students are on in terms of mastering some of that content material. And it is something that our supervisor at Testing is well aware of, and he is well-versed in, and we are currently in the process of looking at all the information and determining the best method of providing guidance to our teachers and our principals in terms of using this information.
And on the Virginia Growth Assessments, just for the public's benefit, is that primarily reading and mathematics, or is it other content areas as well?
Yes, thank you. It is only reading and mathematics.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, I know that some of our schools are, in the accreditation process, are accredited with conditions because of science instruction. And I was curious, I know in our previous budget cycle, there were support positions in central office that were identified, but I wasn't sure if we had yet filled those positions in the science department, and how are we doing with addressing some of those science scores? Here, they're comparable, it looks like, at least the middle and high school year levels to math, which isn't saying a whole lot as far as like grades C, D, and F, but I just wondered if we could have a little bit more... I'm concerned about science instruction, and I would like to know what we are doing or having the works as far as support staff to help our teachers, our science teachers. Do we still need more people? Do we need, can you give me an update? Thank you.
We'd have to get you an update on staffing. I don't have exact numbers on fill rates, so we can follow up with that information, but we do have a focus on science. The Teaching and Learning Office does have a strategic plan where they are working on, I've asked for a strategic plan for, a continuous improvement plan for every core content area. We did deliver science materials, hands-on science instructional materials to schools, as well as ensuring all schools are utilizing the updated standards for teaching science. And those schools where there's a significant gap have plans in place for, science plans and action plans in place that are being monitored. So we do have a heavy focus on science. We're looking at the data and supporting schools and tracking progress over time.
All right, thank you. I'm glad to hear that, and I suppose those are the action plans that are at the school base level, right?
Every school has.
Every school has them, but some schools are focusing more.
Some schools, of course, are doing well, doing better than others. Those schools where science was clearly the lowest indicator in measurements of success, those schools definitely have science plans in place.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much.
Ms. Ackleborn?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Actually, I want to just tag on to the last thing that you said, Ms. Wall. You guys were just talking about the continuous improvement plans and how schools have action plans. I've been... I've been, a couple of parents that I've spoken with lately, in general, understand that there's gaps and things like that all over the place. If you are a parent, where at your school can you get this information, or how should they be able to find out what's going on so that they can be more informed about either what's going on locally in their own building or what they could be expecting for their child?
So they should reach out to their school administration to find out when the CIT meets so that they can learn, get updates on what's happening with their continuous improvement plans. Of course, you can always reach out to your teacher to get more information about, at the local classroom level, what work is coming forward. So I would say start with the school first, and those CI plans are publicly available for them.
All right, Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I just wanted to pose this question so that our public is aware. Is there a resource or a place that's sort of a condensed version on what different tests mean and where they come from? And if we don't have that, could, is it possible that we could look into at some point in time, like a cheat sheet? Because I think it's very confusing for parents to understand the difference on which test is a state test, even if it is a state test, why it's a state test, when we administer it versus, say, a regular assessment in your math class, for example. That's questions I often hear. There's a lot of confusion about that. And then when we revisit this after the fall test, if you don't mind just reiterating that, the benchmarks won't be clear because we did it last year, but then they changed the test this year. So that does skew data, and I think that's a very important reminder that we keep at the forefront when we discuss these test scores. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. I'll be brief and succinct, so I just have a couple of comments. One, I appreciate the level of transparency. I think that's very important. I know there was a study done on the amount of minutes that Fairfax County uses on academics, and it's not very high proportionally on their board meetings. So I think these are very important to have these presentations and be open with the community, you know, and looking at these patterns. I think, again, these observations, very interesting that the changes, not a lot between the previous years. Looking at the VGAs, this is just a general observation that I think is obviously not in our control because they're state, but having a fall and winter, I have some further concerns just about the sheer number of testing that teachers will be doing now that we'd be adding that onto the caseload as well. Last thing, you know, and I know, you know, looking at other jurisdictions, I'm sure they're looking at different standards and scores, but is there any way to get any type of regional benchmarking or comparisons, especially in the areas of students who are on or below, just to get an idea of kind of where we're at in the greater northern Virginia area?
Is this in reference to the VGA?
No, I'm sorry. I moved on to like the, well, yes, I'm sorry, yes, it is, about yes.
So I'm not sure what data is available regarding the statewide VGA, but that is something I can look into.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? I appreciate the presentation today. I just have our clarifying question. I had some questions about the testing, but it sounds like what Ms. Williams and Mr. Wilk discussed and also asked for will cover my questions. There is one thing you did not touch on tonight that I don't necessarily need an answer now, but if could someone, if you can answer tonight, follow up with me with material that I could share, is whether or not you could elaborate on the new test or amended test for fifth graders in addition to the SOL, the VGA, comes at the end of the year. It's a field test for the spring of 2023 for reading and writing integration. I've had a few constituents reach out to me about what it meant and how it would change current SOLs. So if you could either address it now or email me something that I could share, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I would, rather than speak off the cuff, I will look into that and get something to you.
Okay, I appreciate your time today and your informative presentation, and that's it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes superintendent's time.
All right, then, just make sure we're moving on to board matters. Agenda 1501, the proposed policy 796, sexually explicit materials, which is on by Division Council. This item was placed on the agenda by Division Council, who we will turn this over to. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank Mr. Deutsch for catching the mislettering. I always like to have extra proofreaders, so I'm going to fix that. The other point I'd like to make, and just for clarification on the red line, as I was, as often is the case, I was going through the agenda today again and realized that the most recent version of the policy and the regulation had not been updated. So what we uploaded on Friday with the agenda item was not the most recent version. And so that's, the red line was just to make, be entirely transparent to the public that what we, the difference between what we had posted on Friday and the actual version that should have been posted and was posted today. So as has been noted, it's the first read, and so therefore, I just wanted to be clear that the two items that are, well, in the policy, the only change was making the change from parents to parents and guardians. And in the regulation, the reason those two definitions were taken out is because they actually aren't terms that appear in the policy. And again, this, they had already been taken out and wouldn't even have been included. This is the final version. And so they are not definitions that are required by the model policy. The model policy has lots of definitions, and they are, come from various parts of the code. So what the General Assembly did was say, pass, VDOE, you make the policy, they made the policy, and they, in order to get definitions, they imported definitions from various statutes in the code. And even though harmful, the definition for harmful to juveniles and juvenile actually appears in the code, it's not, doesn't appear in the policy. So I just want to make sure that that was cleared to everyone, that that's not, it was not a substantive change, it just wasn't in the policy at all. Also, I want to make clear that the implementation of the policy, the model policy issued by Virginia Department of Education is very clear that prior to the out, to the start of the academic year is when we will be required to have all this implemented, right? So you pass the policy now in January, and then prior to the next academic year in August, we need to be ready to have all these things in place. As you can imagine, it's quite a task to sort of go through and identify and assess all of our materials across the division, every kind of material, written, pictorial, art, anything that might meet the definition in here of sexually explicit materials, catalog that and make it ready to be available for the public to see on the websites and all the things that the policy requires. So I just wanted to kind of lay out the timeframe for that and make sure everybody understood. I'm happy to answer any questions. Obviously, this is the first read. It will be passed on January 4th. I think someone maybe said the 7th earlier. It will be the 4th as soon as we're back from the break.
All right, so this is, are there any discussion? Ms. Wall?
I want to thank Division Council for clarifying those points. Those were some good clarifications and some of the questions that I had raised previously to, or prior to this meeting, so thank you. I know that community members are very concerned that our, that we be thorough and comprehensive and transparent as we go through our materials. And obviously, they, there are concerns that I have been hearing about how this implementation will proceed and what the timeline is and everything else, like how this will be rolling out. So I do appreciate that. My question, I had a question about paragraph six, and I think it might be of the policy. Does that last sentence mean that content will be available to review in person or hard copy?
Let me just get.
And I guess if we turn to the, I'm going to pull it up here, policy. Yeah, the final sentence, the process shall include provisions requiring students to have instructional materials, including sexually explicit, explicit content available for review by parents. Is that?
Yeah, the policy requires, the model policy requires that there be a process for online access to these. As you can imagine, though, of course, there's an exception for things that might be copyrighted, things that you just can't literally get on a, you know, if they're in, I don't know, and I don't pretend to be a teacher, so I'm using words I may not know what they mean, but Canvas or some other content management system that you can't then give access to for whatever reason. So there would be ways to make that accessible in person if it wasn't able to be some, a content that could be shared online. An example might be readily available if there were content, curriculum content from a teacher's class on family life, for instance, right? If it's a page and a description of some activity that would meet the definition, then that could very easily be shared as a PDF to, with the parent, right? So that's, that's an easy example. But if it's an artwork that might be copyrighted, or it's a, some other sort of proprietary from, we have so many content management and curriculum management systems that have content readily available for teachers. And I know Justin, as a former teacher, is sitting here thinking, oh, you don't know what you're talking about, Wade, but, but there is lots of content that, you know, for whatever reason, might not be able to be electronically available. And there would be a way under the policy for people to still see that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Anyone else, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that we cross references with other existing policies or regulations when we come back in January to vote on this, because there are some caveats already in existence in our system, and I would not like to see duplicative work on behalf of our staff or our parents. For example, if your student is taking a health class, as a parent, you receive notice for opt-in or out. We don't want to then, 30 days before the material is presented, have another notice. I just want to be careful that we don't overburden our staff while we're meeting the requirement or overburden our parents. It's important that this information is available to them, but we want to make sure that we're not sending out so much that things start to get ignored, because that does happen because this is very sensitive material for a lot of our Princeville County School families. So I want to make sure that we're doing it in a manner that is comprehensive and not duplicative. So thank you.
Ms. Williams, I'll make sure that we add some cross references. There are some, as you note, things like the family life policy, which are separate code provisions that talk about family access, right? Nothing in this policy is really going to supersede those or impact those. They would run sort of side by side, and parents would have rights to the family life. And of course, the family life curricula, certainly lots of that curricula might not meet the definition of sexually explicit. So it wouldn't, you know, some of that, a lot of that material wouldn't fall under this policy regardless. So just wanted to clarify that, but we'll certainly add some cross references.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that also our parents are reviewing that, that they're aware of the other policies that are in existence, especially if you are a parent that has a student matriculating up through the system and you haven't had experience with this type of policy before. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think, again, that parents and guardians definitely have a right to be notified, notified in advance their child's education. As evidence, last meeting, we began further codifying notifications on what type of school-wide events parents should be notified about. The Commonwealth of Virginians, kind of goes with what you were saying, has historically done a great job posting curriculum and standards for all grade levels and subject matters. I do not feel like the ability for parents to review that material that may be sexually explicit is any different from what all jurisdictions should already be doing. In the Commonwealth, parents have had the option to seek alternative instructional and related academic standards. Like family life, parents and guardians have had the option to seek those alternative educational options. However, I do ultimately believe schools should defer to parents to determine whether the use of sexually explicit materials is appropriate for their children. I would suggest for those who do not agree with these model policies, please email your members of the General Assembly. Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Wall?
I have one further question. I think what Mr. Wilk was saying, it kind of reminded me that I did have this additional question. You know, I do think that in these matters, especially with such a diverse county as we have and various belief systems and backgrounds and standards and everything, that can all be so different for different families, the parents should be, you know, at the head of the table on this, not just, you know, sitting at the table, but at the head. So I think we, my question is, if, if there is, is there, and I've read the regulation, I don't think I've seen it in here, but if parents, if there's an opportunity, is there an opportunity for parents to raise an issue with material that has, that perhaps isn't on our list? I guess is what I'm saying, is we miss something or they feel like something is objectionable. I know we have this process with books through libraries, but is that part of the contemplation of this, that we would have a process like this for something that we may have missed? If a parent wants to maybe have an alternative assignment or something like that?
Yeah, I'm sure, and a lot of that depends on what the material might be. But yes, so if it's a book, we have a process already outlined for books and challenges to books and things of that nature. But certainly, if a parent came, and look, we're a division with 100 schools, and the task of cataloging and making sure, because it includes, remember, not just pictures, but also any written description of an event or item that might be sexually explicit under the definitions, that's a tremendous amount of content to go through, and is it possible that we'll miss something? Yes, I think it's possible. But it's also possible that somebody might see something that they think is, in their minds, sexually explicit, but that actually doesn't meet the technical legal definitions in the policy, right? So just with any concern that they would have about a curriculum item, I would think they would bring that to the principal and have that resolved. However, we need to do that.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Okay, so tonight's the first reading for proposed policy 796. Additional information on this policy can be found in Virginia Code Section 2.21-16.8, excuse me. Mr. Anderson, you discussed the next steps earlier. Could you just review them really quickly? And then if there's no more questions, we can finish the discussion.
Sure, we'll be, tonight's the first reading, as has been noted. We're going to go back and probably make a couple of changes in adding cross references and that kind of thing. And then when we bring it back, we'll put up a red line again of showing the differences that we, we don't expect there to be any content changes, just maybe add the addition of cross references. And I'm going to fix the lettering. And so we'll bring that back on the 4th for approval.
All right, being no further discussion on this matter, we will move on, yep, to board matters. I don't, I don't remember, oh, Mr. Wilk, you're on deck. I think that we started with Ms. Jessie last time, so, thank you. Oh, one second. If board members could stick to the three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Or whatever. So I just want to recap some events that I've attended since the last board meeting and recognize some schools for that. On 11/17, Montclair Elementary had their book fair. I wanted to also recognize on 11/18, Potomac High School kicked off their basketball season with the Blue Blood Madness. It's a great event, great turnout from the community. I got to reprise my role as the Panther mascot. I should challenge one of you to take on one of your high school mascot. It's a fun time being in that hot, suffocating costume, so, you know, anyone who's up for that. I think Ms. Agapoor might be my next one, the bulldog. On 11/19, on 11/19, I was honored to be invited to speak about civic duty and service for the Cub Scout PAC 289, which represents students that attend Henderson, Patty, mostly those two elementary schools. On 11/20, I was able to briefly speak and attend the Moms Demand Action Event, where I highlighted a lot of the achievements and new hires that we've done as a division to amp up our school security and that just the FTE positions that we've added to better support school security. On 11/21, a little bit after Veterans Week, but I did my last veterans event, Forest Park did their muffins for military, which was honoring their military families during the breakfast period. So it was great to be there and great to be invited to speak. I also, at that time, had a school day visit to Mary Williams Elementary. They have an outstanding pre-K program housed there, and probably one of my favorite events that I'll prob- that I'll probably have for the history here is being able to attend their beauty shop. They, they did a great job with the hair, and they were fake shaving me, and the kids kept on saying, God, you have so much hair. So, you know, fun times. 11/21, 11/22, I want to thank Chance, you know, for bringing up during the last student times about his experience at Potomac Middle School. I was able to attend back-to-back, 11/21 and 11/22. I think Principal Preston's doing an amazing job at that building. She's kicking butt, and she's phenomenal. 12/1, attended a Grand Park basketball game. On 12/2, I was at the Montclair Bingo Game, taking tickets and selling tickets. I also attended Forest Park's Fall Play, which, as you know, is my wife's program. Great job there. 12/3, Potomac hosted Breakfast with Santa, which was brought back. And then last but not least, last night, I was at the Henderson Book Fair and had the ability, I think, again, to present with Dr. Lynn Mara Cologne our specialty programs at Dumfries Town Council. So there we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agapour.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So it's been a while since we've last spoken, hasn't it? We went to the Virginia School Board Association Conference, and I got to attend some workshops on education law, which is always very interesting. Public rec, hey, it is. Public Records Act, redesigning the high school experience, which was a really, Ms. Wall and I were at that one. That was a really fascinating talk to, to hear about. I also attended the Northeast Region Meeting and met colleagues from Manassas City, Manassas Park, Loudoun, Fairfax, Stafford, and Spotsylvania to work through our legislative agenda. I believe I mentioned this before, but I get to represent Congressional District 10 with our, for Virginia School Board Association, so I'm excited about making some more advocacy efforts on our national level. This weekend, I went to Voice, which is Virginians Organized for Interfaith Community Engagement. It was on Sunday. Their, their talk this time was on mental health in our communities. As you may know, in Prince William County, we are getting a crisis receiving center. I believe it's supposed to be open next year. And I've been rather vocal about making sure that our students and our children 18 and under are being considered in mental health, because if anybody's ever had to deal with mental health issues with your child, you know that it is very hard to get a bed if they need one. Dominion's often packed. We don't have anything locally here. It's hard to get therapists, psychiatrists, psychologists. So anything that we can do to advance the cause of getting better mental health services for all of our citizens is a great thing, but particularly, I advocate for our children. So if you are listening to this, please make sure you reach out to our Board of Supervisors to see if they can somehow secure some extra funding so that we can consider our children. Our adolescents and our youth have a little bit more regulation surrounding them. They're not allowed to be in the same exact places with adults, so we do need to be considering what we can do for our children. I went to some basketball games. It's basketball season, so I got to see the girls play at Hilton and at Osborne Park. Teams looked great. I, I get tired watching them. You girls are, oh, gosh, it's so amazing. I wish I could move like that. I don't know what Justin was talking about, I, about this costume thing. I, I would like to do it, yeah. Heck, yeah. So I look forward to, I don't know, a mascot thing with, with Mr. Wilk over here. Center court, yeah, be there. All right. Got to go to a couple book fairs. Please invite me to your book fairs. I have a grandson, and he needs more books in his library. I went to Rosa Parks in Westgate. I hope everyone gets a beautiful, restful break, and we'll see you back in January. Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Awesome. Congrats to Bull Run and Battlefield for earning the Purple Star designation. I think that's a great accomplishment. On November 16 through 18, I attended the VSBA conference in Williamsburg as well, and appreciated the school law update, legislative outlook, and some of the other great things that I present, or attended, and also had the opportunity to present on the trauma of redistricting, which was timely since we have a redistricting coming up in, that affects the Gainesville District. On November 18 was the Boosterthon at Tyler for fundraising, and I'd actually, it'd been years since I'd seen this kind of fundraiser, and it was impressive. I've never seen so many kids move so fast for so long, in the same direction, I should add. November 19 was the first Lego League competition at Osborne Park, and Alvee and Tyler advanced two states this coming Saturday, so good luck to all the teams. November 22 was a Turkey Trot at Tyler. They do lots of running over there at Tyler. My favorite part was seeing how the fourth graders ran with the kindergarteners and helped them, you know, understand what they were supposed to be doing, and it was just so heartwarming to see the older kids help the younger ones. November 29 was the Legislative Breakfast with the Prince William County legislators, which was very good. December 2, I attended a fun and extremely well-organized winter event at Alvee Elementary, put on by the PTO there, so great job to the PTO. I also was able, able to meet the new principal at Alvee Elementary, Mrs. Johnson. So welcome to Mrs. Johnson, to the Gainesville District. Also, on December 2, I attended Puffs. It's a, it was a theatrical performance at Battlefield loosely based on Harry Potter, and it was told from the perspective of the Hufflepuffs, which was hilarious. And they, it was the debut performance for the new theater director there at Battlefield High School, Megan Coddling, and it was just so well-done. And the, the playbill was professional quality, so also kudos to the families who did that. Congrats to Battlefield students who earned their academic letters at the awards ceremony in November. To receive that academic letter, students needed to have a three-point GPA overall last year with a 3.0 in each individual class, so no lower than a B. And this year, there were 944 students who were recognized, which I think is awesome and tremendous. So proud of all the students. We have a community meeting coming up tomorrow night for the Rosemount Elementary Boundary Redistricting Process. If you live in that community, please tune in. And my parting thoughts on the first quarter data, it's my highest priority to see that our students achieve. I know it takes a whole lot of hard work, and there's still a lot to do, but to quote a Zimbabwean proverb, "When there is a mountain in your path, do not sit at it, down at its foot and cry. Get up and climb it." I am along for the climb, and I appreciate each and every one of you, from the lowliest kindergartner to our superintendent and all the parents and teachers in between who are on this climb together as we tackle student achievement in Prince William County Schools.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Wall, I think that might be my favorite quote or proverb yet. So I'm, myself, like the rest of my colleagues up here, attended the VSB Annual Convention in Williamsburg, and also attended many sessions. My biggest takeaway from that was a keynote speaker who addressed the audience on the upcoming AI programming that's out there and how that could possibly affect our young learners in the future, as well as the way that their brains function in, excuse me, differently than many of us who have already graduated from school. Found that very fascinating. In addition to that, I was able to attend a Woodbridge Middle School Multicultural Night on 11/21. The annual Legislative Breakfast as well was attended, where the school board and our superintendent highlights our legislative priorities to the delegation that we send to Richmond from Prince William County. It's a chance for all of us to interact and ask questions and clarify our legislative priorities and what we value as important as a school division. In addition, I attended a webinar by The Path Forward on Mental Health and Its Impacts on Students, Reading and Math Night at Belair Elementary on behalf of Ms. Ralston. Family, excuse me, I also attended the Fall Play, Camelot and Camelittle, at Woodbridge Middle School on December 3, which I think in my nine years might have been the most fun that I've had at a middle school play and the best reception by the greeters I have ever had. I don't think I've ever seen students that excited to see a school board member show up for their play. That was fantastic. I am also heavily into robotics and happy that I am, again, a robotics parent. Unlike my fellow school board members, I was at North Stafford High School on the 19th of November for their Lego, first Lego League competition. I want to congratulate Featherstone's Blockheads on winning the Innovation Award, and also Niabsco Stars 2 for qualifying for state championship. In addition, I was able to attend PWEA's Racial and Social Justice Town Hall for parents of color and how they feel their, their students are doing in the school division. And I want to give a special shout-out to George Mason University's 2022 Community Changemakers and Innovators. Mr. Alan Johnson won this year. He works with A.J. Keller Realty and volunteers in many of our Prince William County schools. And as myself, being a 2017 recipient, it was my honor to be able to drive him home his award this year. Upcoming events, I will be hosting a meeting greet at Toto's in Woodbridge this weekend from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. I will be hosting office hours, 12:14. Please email me for, excuse me, to reserve your time slot or if you have any questions. The Governor's School Innovation Park will be meeting, 12:08. And lastly, I just want to thank, excuse me, congratulate Freedom Football Team for making it into the state championships, and thank all of our teachers, especially our elementary school teachers, who help students shop and get ready for the holiday seasons. I think that's a lot of work that goes unnoticed, so enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston.
I'm just wishing you a happy holiday.
Is she not? Okay. I'm, I'm okay. Ms. Ralston, do you have any? Nope.
No, nothing else. Have a good, good weekend.
Hey, that leaves me. I hate, thank you to the schools who extended invitations to their holiday festivities or various celebrations since the last meeting. I was able to watch the Turkey Trot at Ellis Elementary and listen to Ms. Strab talk about, talk to interested job candidates at the future school at Rosemount Lewis site. There are also a number of events over the next few more weeks. I also attended a town hall yesterday, I think it was yesterday, with Supervisor Lawson, as she discussed a number of housing communities coming into Brentsville District. Although land usage is not within purview of the school board, I continue to encourage residents to familiarize themselves with the upcoming Pathway to 2040 Comprehensive Plan vote, which is next Tuesday. According to the town hall, there are three alternatives, and the vote next Tuesday will increase density in Brentsville and will impact schools. As a school board member, I do, I do have concerns about the thousands of homes coming into the district, Brentsville District, and whether or not current schools can absorb the, current schools and current boundaries can absorb the new potential students. I enjoyed rooting for the Tigers and their pioneers as past month at the regional games. Both teams played exceptionally well, and I heard reports of positive sportsmanship. Congratulations again to the Brentsville cheer on a winning another award, and I'm extremely proud to represent all four high schools in the Brentsville District. I am so thankful to coaches, athletic trainers, and all of the staff members who support our student athletes. Congratulations to Coach White for winning the 3B Regional Coach of the Year. The division held the first boundary meeting for proposed boundaries for the site being, the school being, being built at Rosemount Lewis. Ms. Wall, myself, then spent a few hours, a few hours driving around boundaries and submitted questions last week to the division for clarification. I was recently reviewing the portal, and I saw there was another proposed plan, so I would continue to monitor that if you're in an impacted district. There are a number of schools who are in, in the impacted area and neighborhoods that are involved in this boundary, so community involvement is essential. There's another meeting tomorrow, and links to the meetings are posted on social media, mine, Ms. Wall, and Ms. Agapour, along with the division. And I believe PWCS has a Twitter account with, just for boundaries. I maintain concerns about the trainings for staff and testing for students. I relayed any concerns expressed to me to the administration. I know I've said this before, but I just want to end on this note, so it doesn't get lost in all the other wonderful things that are happening. But I ask all state elected officials to consider the impact of workload on staff when creating new laws or training mandates. This workload also extends to high-stake testing. We should not test to test. We should test to assess and apply data. There's no time to review data and teach them, then there is no time to learn. Have a great evening, everyone.